Tim?
Yep, yeah.
Derek?
He's with me.
Good to go? We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item is 25-128, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Motion on second, all vote in favor? All oppose? One to 120, 25, 129. There is nobody out there. Open forums, we'll move to 25, 1, 3, 0. Rebuilding update. SBT Architects and the County Garden are here in attendance. I believe they have the floor.
Okay, thanks. Geller, can you bring Kevin up?
We thought we'd start out by showing the foreplaner vision and then the exterior kind of walkthrough, just so you can see the changes. Really, we looked at a lot of changes, a lot of different options to make sure we're in budget. Also, heard what was said last time with the, you know, people want things kind of safe the way we had them as much as possible. And so, we, the only change that we're making to the plan at this point is this right here with the front entry. So, we've keeping the art in the Voag building. We are keeping all the classrooms the way they were before and not having to take the music room off, not having to move weights or anything like that. The only thing that we're able to do here, which is, is pretty efficient, is we, the high school wing used to kind of wrap around the gym a little bit. And we're able to take that two-story area off and reconfigure this area so that, and on both levels. So, the only things that we have lost from what we had before is a conference room in the admin area for the high school and a para room that we had on the second floor. There was a smaller room that had like the desk for the pares to be in. Really, the pares should be here to be at in the classrooms helping staff that really don't necessarily need a room of their own. There's still a study room up there that could be used. And you want to circle that, Kevin? You want to kind of show where that is? So, that's this bedroom and the, and the, we just kind of wrapped that, took out some hallway space. So, functionally, really didn't have to make any changes to anything except for those two areas. And, yeah, everything works. So, Kevin, you want to go to the, and you can see here on the plan that we have a double door exit out of the gym to the left there. That'll be a pad of concrete and the gate with a fence that connects to the, to the Voag building and steps that go down. Kevin, you want to go to the 3D?
So, that's kind of showing the entrance on the west side of the building. It's sort of on the north side.
It was on the northwest, it kind of had two corners before, we kind of moved it over. And, and this entry now looks more like what the elementary side did. You'll see that we had some kind of white banding that went around that we took off. It's pretty expensive to, and, yeah, so this is, you'll go underneath this and there's be that covered walkway from the parking lot once you get to the, Kevin, can you kind of walk up there? And, and you'll see that, that'll go to the front doors of the, of the building. And, so, really, I've been pretty successful not having to do any, much of any other changes. You'll see here is the back that we're showing right now. Kevin, can you go kind of up top and show where that area was taken out and the court, the space between the two buildings? So, we kind of simplified this area in the back right there. I was actually always concerned about this area a little bit because it's that wrapped around and that rough slope down towards that area. We had a cricket back and, and this is a lot better as far as any potential leaks that maybe have occurred in that area. So, that simplified that. And then, Kevin, can you show the backside of the weights area? So, we did take off the ramp and the stairs that were on the back of this. Really, if you go around to the left, there's already a ramp and stairs that go down to the parking lot in the back to where people will come up those ramps and stairs to go into the concession stand. Any area is really a duplicate area, just that only served the, really mostly the band room for that ramp and stair. And it's saying like $65,000 to take that off. So, this seems like a pretty good approach to, to that.
We still have the sidewalk.
Yeah.
To get from the parking lot to the...
Sidewalks still, it depends on the little side. Any questions about that?
So, the buildings aren't connected. It's just a chain link fence.
They brought iron fence of some kind, yeah. Yeah, fence. And really, what that does is it, the main thing is it forces everybody to go through the district or through the central office before they can have access to any other parts of the building, whether that's the Voag or even...
The connect, the Voag to the school. It's just a walkway with a chain link fence then.
Rott iron.
We have, oh, rott iron fence, but yes, that's correct. But the, like I said, the main focus is that for security reasons, you can't access those, that building unless you go through the office.
Will the students go to the Ag room the same way, same on the north side?
There's two ways to get there. You can go through that connection right there. That's the accessible route with handicap ramp that extends along that west side of the building. Or you can go down the steps to go into the, that gets into the south side of the building. Which is how we had it before. Anyway, before that was all concrete and there was, it was still the same design.
But you can still access it from the outside? You don't go through the school, it's not closed off, like it's not one hall?
Well, the gate will be closed though during the school.
Yeah, it'll all be closed off.
You mean the buildings do not connect?
No, not necessarily that.
I mean, we...
I mean, they were showing on this like there's openings, but those would be gates where it would be kind of stuff that would just allow access through gates.
With the intention there's provide a secure...
I know, but what's going on with the security system then?
Path of travel between the two buildings.
Still puts you, you have to go through the front door to access the whole building unless you're jumping fences and, I mean, if somebody's going to jump the fence, they could break out windows and all that kind of stuff too. I mean, they're, I think it's, it's secure, I mean, what we lacked before, what the setup before was, people had access to that building without going through the central office.
How, how would a handicap student go, would they have to go through the industrial arts room, classroom area to get to the Ag room?
So, there's, they would basically be going kind of through the art room to get to the rest of the building. Can you show a plan of that?
The art room and the industrial art, the woods, I guess, for the industrial arts.
So, you go into basically a little vestibule lobby that goes to the, yes, to that classroom to get into the Voag part.
And I apologize, I can't see that very well.
Sorry.
I can point it out. So, this is, zoom out a little bit. This is that sidewalk that comes down and this is the ramp piece. And then, you go in here and there's a little vestibule. So, you go in here to the art room or you go in here to the classroom, the Voag classroom.
Which, so we're, we're, we're not having the woods area anymore or we are?
That's a woods area.
So, you're going through the woods area to get to the Ag room? Yes. Sorry, this is the Ag room.
Well, you can go through the classroom.
You have these two classrooms and the woods and those. But, hey, you come in here, do you go through this classroom or access rest? If you wanted to create a hallway right through there, we could do that.
I mean, we've dealt with that already because you come through the Ag to go to the woods currently, you know, using that, using that south door. I mean, it's just, it'd just be the reverse of it. Just, you know, in normal operation before all this, that south side door of the Ag building was the main entrance to both Ag and Woods. So, that's where all, all the Ag and Woods students were coming in. Whether going through the classroom if the bell hadn't rang or around through the shop if they were late. So, I mean, it's just kind of the reverse of that if you have to go through the wood to the Ag.
And for the Ag building, will the art room or what currently is the wrestling room, that's the only renovations that, that are planned for that or...
There are some upgrades to the mechanical system to those classrooms that are included in that too. But beyond, it's 90% the art room and what's going in there and then the HVAC for the classroom kind of pieces. Any other questions, Scotts? I guess, I know, Megan, one of your concerns has always been about access from the, from the basement area, court, court floor level for stretchers and gurneys and things like that. Think that elevator is big enough for a gurney and there's like two options for elevator manufacturer. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong too, but...
It's right behind you.
Kevin, can you talk about the size of that elevator we talked about yesterday? Can you hear me, Kevin? It is, basically, it's an oversized elevator that will fit a gurney. And so, that's what we have in there right now. Uh...
I'm trying to have him sign.
We can leave that there and you guys can, well, switch over to Barry if you have any other questions.
Okay, so, we can go on down to the first or the second page, excuse me, and wanted to provide just a quick snapshot. We were here back in February and at that time, we were working on, we received bids for the GMP3 bid package, which was really kind of all the remaining scopes that have not been purchased in the Earthwork Concrete Structure and Utilities. So, this is basically everybody else for the rest of the project. Those bids have been taken back in February. And then, out of that, there was cost overages, right? We were in an over budget position and we're working through cost reduction measures. So, since that, since that meeting, our team and has been working alongside of Greg and his team to find appropriate cost reductions, very similar to what was reviewed last time. And we've had trade partners that have provided input and, and provided fixed prices on those for the most part. There's a couple of them that are a little bit squishy that needs, need shaking out still, but we're, we're where we need to be. So, the, the last time, or excuse me, the last several weeks have been focused on getting those cost reductions firmed up, aligning our budget both from a construction side and what's available funds in master budget. And we've, we've been working on that, you know, pretty successfully to bring those two numbers into alignment. So, if we could go to the next page. We've got a couple of documents here that we're going to, we're going to review that really outline the path that we've taken and, and is proposed here in front of us. And at the, the end of this, our, our goal is to have an action to approve guaranteed maximum price number three. And, and those documents here are, are prepared in what I'm considering a draft mode because there's, there's some things that have been moving around here. So, we'll have, we'll have the firm amount based on the, the approach tonight and we'll follow up the conversation, follow up for signature with GMP documents later. But, we'll go ahead and pull up the master budget and take a, take a quick look at that if you could. So, if we could start really at the bottom of this spreadsheet and this is where we wanted to, to highlight. What is the, what is the budget position on the total project? And we have kind of two benchmarks. One is what are the funds that are available and then what is the amount of funds that we're expending on the total project, total construction cost? So, at the bottom of this, kind of... So at the bottom of this, kind of the, the very bottom section, uh, outlines the, the various funding sources and approaches. And that, that amount totals, um, forty million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's been, uh, reviewed with, um, and, and validated with the, with Eric and his team. To confirm that those amounts are, are accurate. So as we compare that up to the amount of construction cost, uh, including the cost reductions. So this is, this is taking a, the project that was bid out by the trade partners, reducing the cost through those cost reduction measures. That puts the construction cost, including design, at forty million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So the difference between how much budget is available, how much are we spending at about a, a, just under, um, ninety thousand dollars under budget. So obviously a really good position here, um, from, from a, you know, having those two be very close together. I do want to point out, um, here at the bottom of the sheet is the unrealized bond interest. There has been some bond interest that has been accrued currently and we've anticipated that here. But it is not anticipating any future earnings on any, any bond interest. So if, uh, if anybody has any questions on, on that, I'll have to defer to, to Eric for answering some of those questions, but.
So, um, the, this line here is the CD for the, um, the insurance money. Emily called the, the bank and, um, it matures on May sixth and it's, it's raising about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that, and then the, um, what we're moving off, uh, or working off of before was off of our bank statements. And just with talking with Farmers and Merchants Bank, um, that.
They can trust.
They can trust. The, what's shown on the, um, on the statement wasn't necessarily accurate and there was more. And so Emily worked really hard this week with, with them to figure out what that number is. And, and so we've, we've gained quite a bit more than what we were talking about. And that's just to date.
Okay, so we can, I think, quickly run to the top of this just to confirm the rest of the scope here. So the very top line is the, the GMP one through three without cost reductions in it. So those are all the, basically all the amounts with the bids that we received. Um, excuse me, the very top line is GMP two and three combined. And then the next line, temporary gym, gym use GMP one, that was our very first GMP that's been reconciled. So that was a cost of three hundred and ninety-six thousand. We've got some money in there, about a hundred thousand bucks to renovate those existing locker rooms on the east side of the existing gym to bring those back into, uh, pre-fire condition. As well as, uh, funds in here for the playground. And then, um, the very last line on this kind of top section escalation, inflation tariffs. As we chatted about last meeting that we were here presenting, the, the tariff discussion, obviously making a lot of headlines. We did feel some of that impact from our trade partners, uh, particularly in the structural steel, uh, section of that. So we did incur some additional costs there. We were previously carrying two hundred and fifty, that cost us another hundred and sixty-six thousand, so we've got eighty-four thousand dollars remaining. Uh, and we're gonna tell you here a little bit later what the plan is to use for that. The next section, um, the, the furniture fixtures, equipment, technology. We've got half a million dollars included in here, anticipating what those expenses will be. Uh, in addition to some insurance funds to continue to fund the rest of that. Design fees, we have to pay the utility company to bring in a, a power transformer and a gas meter. And then the, uh, abatement for the existing gym, this is to remove hazardous materials out of that existing kind of classroom area on the west side. And, and get that ready for new construction. So as we total that down, that, that estimated cost would be forty-five million dollars. And then we're removing five, five million, seventy-nine thousand dollars out of that equation to arrive at the forty million dollars, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. Is the total construction, we're, we're defining that as total construction cost for the project. Any questions so far? All right. The next document, um, would be that estimate summary, I think it's the pages from.
I did.
Uh, that very top one, pages from GMP amendment deliverable. Yeah, there you go. Okay, and so this document is an estimate summary, this is the summary of where the costs were, um, by. Construction division, so it's kind of a line by line accounting of how did we come up with the construction cost for GMP three? Keep in mind the line items within this upper section, um, don't have the cost reductions applied yet. Those are, that's handled at the bottom, so as we go to the bottom of this, um, we have a section there. So again, that, that combined total forty mil, forty-one million, eighty-three, seven matches what was on the master budget. And then we remove the V, the, the cost options of the five million, oh, seventy-nine. Would bring our current construction target and, or excuse me, current construction budget to thirty-six million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one seventy-six. And that would be for all, all, all GMPs together. And then as we go down to the bottom section, as we pull out just GM three, GMP three, which we're contemplating tonight would be. That total of twenty-seven million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So pause there, any other questions on what we've presented so far? Okay.
Is that? Is that in this somewhere?
It, it is.
I'm gonna get to that.
Yeah, it's included in the, there's a big staple packet that's the, the draft of the guaranteed maximum price and then the, the, it's included in there. And that, this, this document will be in there, um, in the final version as well. So the, the one that you have in the packet is slightly different than this because there were some late changes that were made to that, but it should be pretty close.
So basically this reflects option one of what is on that list, but with a few changes.
Okay, so I think we are ready to go to the cost option selections. So we've, we've prepared and condensed this list down into, um, the most feasible, least impacted, um, costing, or cost option list. Um, and this list reflects the approach that Greg showed here a few minutes earlier. And that was kind of the, the purpose behind why we're showing that. Um, he was, he was providing all the pretty pictures, right? Was to, to show all the things that are, are still part of the project and, and have not been changed. So I'll, I'll, we'll kind of pause, let you guys take a look at that cost option list, um, and the selections that have been provided in there. And, um. Let's kind of review it for a minute and, and ask any questions if you've got any.
You might want to mention Barry, that if it's an X to the right, that, that has been taken out.
Uh, yeah, yeah, thanks for clarifying there too. So if, if the box is highlighted in blue and there's an X in it, that means it is, it has been removed from the project and in this approach.
What's the OFOI stand for? Maybe everybody doesn't know what it means.
Yeah, owner furnished, owner installed.
So on that list, and there's another one with a few pages back, that, is there a dollar amount associated with what, what will be owner furnished, owner installed?
Um, do you have a, which line item are you talking about?
I'm saying all of them together.
Oh.
Uh, the last page, the.
I think the main ones are the, um, the low voltage, the, uh, uh.
Security, access controls.
And access control.
I understand that. Is there a number that's associated with those items that are checked on this list?
There is.
The number that's in the master budget is five hundred thousand dollars.
So that's all that we would have to come up with?
No, that's included in the master budget.
Okay, what, what will the district have to come up with to cover those expenses?
Well, right now, we're saying we're targeting five hundred thousand dollars. So what we want to do is go to those vendors and this is often how it's done on, on these projects is that. You go to these guys and say you have a two hundred thousand dollar budget for security. And if, and they'll go back and we'll look at what they're suggesting. And if they think we need a little bit more, then we'll come back to you and say, well, this is what this looks like. And so, but that's a, uh, but right now it's five hundred thousand dollars.
And that's part of, that's, that's not what the district has to come up with?
It's on.
Is it through the bond?
It's, yeah.
Okay, so.
That's included in that, anticipated in that total cost of construction.
It's five hundred thousand. If it's owner. It's if it's on the owner, same with like the seating, for example. Is there a dollar amount that is associated with that?
Yeah, five hundred thousand dollars.
Those.
You're, you're asking, has it been bid out yet? Is that, is that?
No, I'm saying, is there anything over the bond amount that we have to come up with as a school district?
Gotcha.
Does that, I, I.
Yes, that makes, yes.
So Eric, maybe you could flip back, back to the master budget really quick. Well, you don't, that's kind of clunky, but it, yes, it is anticipated within that master budget so that. So in that, in the total of the forty million dollars and some change, we're anticipating needing to spend that amount. So at the end, so as it sits today, we have to draw a line in the sand and say, this is not a McCown Gordon's scope. As it sits today, we have half a million dollars set aside to cover those expenses. When the time comes and we have that design completed and, and a price tag put to the redesign, we can decide who manages it from there. And it may, may and very well could come back to the McCown Gordon's side of the equation. But for these purposes, we're saying it's not included in our scope. We have a bucket for it that will pay for those expenses that are in the OFOI noted column. So that we have anticipated, you know, we're able to handle those costs when they do come up.
But if this was approved tonight, we don't know what the potential that we might have to come up with. The hope is, the hope is nothing, but we don't know what, I mean, it could be another half million dollars.
I, I think the approach is that.
It's kind of like the furniture, we don't have all the furniture bid out yet either. It's on the owner's side, but what we do is we work to that budget that we have included to make sure that's the scope, that's the amount we're working to.
My point is, is it's open ended, right? We don't know.
I wouldn't say that it's open ended, because we've got to define the scope.
So then if it's not open ended, what's the dollar amount?
We can't say it's not been bid out yet, we have a budget for it.
So, so if, if the dollar, if, if that scope needs to be included today, it's one point two million bucks.
Okay.
If it needs to be, so our groups have sat around the table and the district is included in this and said. We can't spend one point two million dollars on security, AV and technology. We believe we can get this done for a half a million bucks, we just aren't ready to make that decision yet. So we're setting this aside and we're gonna deal with it in the future down the road. But know that we still have to come up, we have to design that to a half a million bucks to fit the budget. Cause that's, we can't go get more money, right?
I suppose we could always take it back to a vote.
So it's on this sheet, show, because we're reducing it from that one point two to the five hundred.
Yeah, so this is a.
That probably shows up here.
Yeah, this is a little bit funky because it is, it is effectively removing it from McCown Gordon's scope. Which is how we're calculating the guaranteed maximum price and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna account for it. Jump up here. Instead of that cost being at this number here, in this section, it's occurring down here. So we're viewing this kind of as everything from this point up is McCown Gordon's costs. Everything below this is paid for directly by the district.
And it, just so, to be clear, this is how it's normally done on projects, like on, on our school projects, typically an owner furnished thing. Cause a lot of these things, you'll have a contract with, say, Nextech, we want to bring in Nextech to work with directly on this. So what is already included in, on the account side is the rough in for all those devices. And so all the, the pipe in the wall, all the boxes in the wall, that's already included in, on the count side. This is just for the wiring that would, that for instance, a group like Nextech would pull, uh, to, to finish the installation. And so that's why it's separated out, uh, it's a very standard way of doing this.
So instead of us coming to you saying, I don't know, like, put in, um, the wireless, you know, key card entries on all the doors. Instead, we, we talk with Nextech and say, we have five hundred thousand dollars, what can you do for us? Is that basically what we're looking at?
Yeah, not just Nextech, but yeah.
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 And, uh. Explained this to some earlier, but not everybody's heard this, so I'm gonna say it again. I'll take some ownership of this because we did this a little bit differently than we have in the past. We had our engineers design this system to be included rather than, uh, and it kind of went overboard and all. And so when they got the numbers back, uh, we saw that basically the budgets, that the numbers that they came back were twice as high as what we typically see for projects. And so we thought, there's no way that these should be twice as high. And we went back and looked and my engineer put eighteen speakers in the waiter. And there's no way you need eighteen speakers in a waiter, right? And so, and he put.
I mean, it would sound great.
And, believe me, I've had some conversations with them. And then they put the speakers in the hallway at six feet on center. And, and I'm like, I don't know what world he was living in, but it wasn't with any common sense, you know? So we've noticed that they were, it ca, this came in at one point two million, we were way overdesigned on it. So in looking at their cost history that they see on their projects and what we also see, it looked like it was twice as high. That's why we think a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, budget is doable. And so, uh, so we ha, in no way, shape or form think it's gonna come back at, you know, another five hundred thousand dollars or one point two million. So, uh, Eric, you said, when you guys did the security for the schools.
When we did it for, for both buildings, it was fifty-eight thousand. So, three years ago.
Yeah.
How many total classrooms are in the whole building? You have an idea?
I think there were thirty-three on the high school side and twenty-some on the elementary side. So, yeah, we don't have, we have some work to do on this one yet, but it's a very normal process that, that we work through with school districts during course of construction, uh, to get that out. And honestly, there's probably a little bit more that needs to come back on the electrical side because they have the rough in.
For one point two million dollars.
For one point two million dollars for the scope, we have to go back. We still need to work with them on making sure that we don't have all that.
Yeah. It, it needs some work and those two need to go hand in hand. And as Greg said, fifty percent of the time, this ends up falling under our McCann Gordon's umbrella, because it's part of the work. We're able to manage it. If the owner doesn't have the resources or the capabilities to go manage trade partners, make sure that they're there at the right time, they have their stuff ordered and they're not getting fingerprints on stuff. Yeah, that's the type of thing that, um, why it comes back to McCann Gordon. And, and that's perfectly acceptable. Like, for the purposes of today, we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna take this, set it aside. We need to go vet it out. It needs the attention. Let's do that when we have the, the time and the, and the bandwidth to go do that. And it's that five hundred thousand dollar scope isn't holding up twenty-seven million dollars worth of work.
Now, also to go along with the numbers that we don't know, I mean, we're working on different opportunities for grants. And so, say we fall into some of those, then, I mean, we don't know what those numbers are going to be either.
I mean, really what we're looking for tonight is a starting point.
Sure.
And things are still going to be worked through throughout the project, uh, I think, just like that.
Yeah, so let's go to the bottom of this spreadsheet, because I think this is a great place to demonstrate where that happens. So, um, we can hop up and do my best to point here. This, this total estimated cost, again, this is the cost of the construction project. This is the, you have funds that are available. So that right now, there's a ninety thousand dollar difference. If you guys do get grants, it just makes that number get bigger. You know, these two numbers get bigger. And that means you've got more kind of, put in your back pocket for rainy day. So if there is some, some things, um, that want to be added back in in the future, um, those can certainly be added in. So I think, you know, part of the, part of the beauty of the cost reductions is there, there's a, there's an approach here where some of those cost reductions that have been taken today can easily be added back in, um, in the, at some point in the future, right? And our, our team will kind of help guide that as we meet throughout the construction process to understand, you know, this is the point when you need to be making that decision beyond this point, it's going to cost you more or it's not feasible anymore.
Yeah, so we're not limiting ourselves what's, what our options are moving forward. So we're not, not limiting that.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and I'll give you a couple, I had a couple of points here. So, uh, we're just finishing work on our Heston project. Uh, it's a thirty-four million dollar project and, uh, two years long, be finishing up this summer. And just last month, finally said, okay, I guess, no more changes. So this, this process goes on throughout. It'll, it'll be, we'll have conversations about it. And the nice thing about this process is it's flexible, but you've just got to create a starting point. And then to what Barry was saying, there's a million dollars in contingency in this construction budget, in these numbers. And so what we try and do is we create a wish list of things and try and do that for things that can be added in, uh, later in the project. Like, you can't add square footage into the project later on, but you can add some finishes, uh.
More speakers in the waiting room.
Well, I would never add eighteen speakers in the waiting room, but, but you could add, you know, asphalt in the parking lots if we deferred that or playground, more playground equipment, things like that. So there's things that we try and set up so that, as we know, that contingency could be available, that those are options that we can get back.
And Greg mentioned this, is I, we want to underscore the importance of, of the guaranteed maximum price and arriving in a path forward. So for, for, again, for the purposes of today, this is the, the approach that's been brought to the table that says, here's the starting point. This is the path that meets the budget, accomplishes the goals that were set out and, and our teams were charged with at the beginning of this process. Let's, we have a, a list of contractors that are sitting in the wings waiting for, waiting for approval on a guaranteed maximum price. So the things that are kind of at stake here is the longer we're not able to write contracts to those contractors, the more we risk those prices going up. And that is not included in this, anticipated in this master budget. So that's where it becomes more painful is if we have another tariff situation, costs increase by two or three or four hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden, we have to go back to the cost option list and put more stuff on there and go remove more scope out of it. So, again, this is, this is not the be all end all. This is the starting point that gets us moving forward with our contractors on board and allows us to move forward quickly. And if there are changes and we expect there to be changes, we know that constructions, it's not a perfect situation where everybody all agrees on the first day that this is how we're going to do it and never changes. It's, just doesn't happen that way. And the process is intended to be flexible and allow those types of, um, back and forth and reductions and adds, and it's part of the process.
One of the nice things about the way this is presented is that it's only using available funds that you have right now, and it's ninety thousand dollars underneath that. So for instance, on that unrealized bond interest of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, that four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars has been accumulated just in the last four months of, of interest on that, the bond amount. So there's going to be more money coming back to there that's not even being taken into account here.
Okay, um, any questions on the cost reduction approach?
I don't know how possible it is. Maybe it's not. On, on these things here, is there a list with the amounts that we're deducting for each thing?
I can get that, I can get that to you.
I sent, I sent what was presented on Monday.
Yep.
Yeah. You should have a copy, I think, too.
Okay.
It's, it's probably in your email.
Oh, it's in my email.
So if you look at, if you, if you look at that list, it's going to be the first option. And, um, we changed four things, I think, from that option. And, and the four things that were changed from what you're, you have seen in that email were, uh, the square footage amount, uh, for the cost reduction. I think originally that showed like sixteen hundred square feet.
Eighteen, seventeen ninety or something like that.
Seventeen ninety, and then, uh, when we actually got done with the design, it's more like, what, a thousand?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred square feet. So that changed a little bit. We added some things back that we thought, uh, really shouldn't be taken away. Uh, uh, we had some wall tile that we thought, we went a little too far with, taken out. So we made, we added that back in. We added back in, uh, some soffits that, uh, were an option. Uh, we need those soffits, uh, for a couple of reasons. Part of it is that they're above some glass that has sprinkler system and that we have to wash the glass with. So, uh, that was, uh, the second one, that was, or third one that was added. And then, uh, there was a fourth one.
It was your ceiling tile.
Oh, and then the, uh, some, some ceiling tile that, uh, it's more of an accent that have the wood ceiling tile look that you saw in the, uh, kind of entry to the media center and in the media center itself, we'd looked at taking that out, but we thought that was going too far. So we included that back in. And then, uh, there was another one, and that was, uh, the, the sliding doors, barn doors at the commons area. Uh, we had to have something to cover those openings. So, uh, we, we think that was a nice part of the design, especially, uh, for the cafeterium. So those are the ones that we added back in.
Does the entire design, is it complete enough that we have fire marshal's approval?
Yes.
So it's been signed off by a fire marshal?
Yeah.
Even with the changes made?
Uh, we, we'll have to resubmit it for that entry, but that won't affect, uh, we still have the same kind of exiting, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Do we have to submit it to the state board again?
No, just can't state fire marshal. And then they'll come and do a fifty percent, fifty percent, they'll do an inspection when, uh, construction is fifty percent complete. Then they'll do an inspection at the end.
So the plans don't have to be submitted to the state board?
No.
At all?
They use Kansas State Fire Marshal. They used to have, there used to be a, uh, uh, an architect that's part of that department, but that went away about fifteen, sixteen years ago because of lack of funding. So it all just goes to the Kansas State Fire Marshal now. I will say, on Heston, this is an example that, oh, doesn't happen here, but we've been working on that project, as I said, for two years. And, uh, every fire marshal inspector can be a little bit different. They have their key things, you know? Well, we built one classroom wing at Heston last year, and then this year, we started the second classroom wing. And started last summer. And, uh, we had all of our plans approved from the Kansas State Fire Marshal's office. Then the local inspector, just last week or two weeks ago, told us that, uh, he didn't like how our temporary exiting worked. So he wants us to redo that, even though there's only six weeks of school left. Couldn't even get it done for three weeks. And the project couldn't be done, uh, before they came back for school next year. Those things, things like that can happen. But, uh, that's why we have to work through some of those things. But all, all things are good here.
All right, we do have, um, the draft of the GMP is available. Um, it's very similar to the approach that was taken at GMP two. It consists of a, um, AI cover sheet, contains, um, that, that contains references to our base contract, has a, a tabulation of what's the running total amount that we've, that our guaranteed maximum price is based on. And then, um, includes clarifications. So if there's anything that has changed or anything slightly different or is clarified within our pricing, that's included in that section, the estimate summary, which is what the previous document that we looked at that has the divisional breakdown. And then, um, references the plans, specifications, the project, uh, schedule, which is similar to this, but in, I mean, fourteen pages of detail. And then we'll, we'll include the, um, the cost reduction, cost option sheet that accompanies that cost reduction value will all be contained within that document. So I want to be clear, the, the copy that's, uh, available is a draft. There's been some tweaks that have been made to that, so that, that is a representation of what the final will look like. It'll be very, very similar to that with a few tweaks to the, to the final amount. But the final amount that you've seen on the board or in this presentation is, is what we're, we're anticipating being final amount that's reflected in that future document, the final draft. So we'll go back to the schedule here real quick and I think Eric can give a quick update on, on the schedule.
Yeah, so last time we were here, we kind of, we talked through this and it, and nothing has really changed. So as you can see, if you're on the site, we have started. Demol- demolition has started. Um, when I was by there today, pretty much the structure was still standing from the commons building, but the skin was gone. Um, so by the end of the week, that should all be down and out of there. But really, the goal is for the K six wing is to have that complete by the end of July of twenty-sixth, so that that space could be used. Um, the seven tweak, seven twelve wing would follow at the end of twenty twenty-sixth. So December of twenty-sixth, that would be, um, complete with, I hope you could move in over a winter break and begin using it quarter one of twenty-seven. The gymnasium, that's where our critical path, so that's where this timeframe is for construction. That's where everything runs through. So you can see that finishes up quarter one of twenty-seven. So again, like we talked last time, everything's still tracking currently. And that's, that's kind of where we're at. Any, any questions that I can answer on that?
Why is the junior high high school finished after the elementary?
There's a lot more square footage there, a lot more classroom space. There's a lot more infrastructure for that, that high school or junior, senior high area. So the hope is, once we get people on site, is we're going to start on that north end, which is the junior, senior high wing and the gymnasium and work our way south. The elementary is basically is going to catch everything because there's less square footage there. And that, that's going to be filler work for our trades. So a concrete guy, when they show up, they're going to start from the north, work south. They can only do so much in there until we have to backfill some walls and break things up, that they will hop over to the elementary and begin footings, foundations over there. So that's.
What is the big, is that January, the beginning of the year, or what's the?
I can make that figure just a little bit.
My eyes are not fair.
Yeah, so we're in April right here. So basically, April cuts everything loose.
Okay.
Yep. And then we're, sorry, where were you at here?
I'm just going to come up.
Okay.
I'm just asking what part of the year?
So this is July, end of July. So it's ready, July of twenty-sixth here. So, so the K six wing is ready for August of twenty-sixth to occupy. The seven twelve wing is complete December of twenty-sixth, so it's ready for Q one of twenty-seven.
Components that are in the seven twelve two are like the cafeteria and the caf- all that.
Cafeteria, kitchen.
Media center.
Yep.
All those that, you know, just larger square footage.
Larger square footage, yep.
Yeah, to, to put it simply, the seven through twelve and the gymnasium are the longest portions of construction. So if they start at this, you know, all, all three of those sections start at the same time, this, the day through six is going to finish sooner. And it, you know, works out really well that it's aligned with a end of summer of twenty-sixth completion. So.
And then the vo lag is, is sprinkled in there over a summer.
All right, any questions so far?
When are our pods modulars? When is that contract out?
Um, technically, the contract right now is through December of this year. Uh, we would need another six months of it. Cause they're, they're to December. The contract has, we did a two-year contract when we signed up for the, the first contract, which is the eight classroom, two classroom and office. And then the follow-up one was a year. And then, so they didn't start till December of last year, or not last year, the year before. But, so we're, we're going to have to do another contract with them.
How long? A year?
Then, well, the, the need, or the need would be for six months in the scenario. But we'll, I mean, we'll have a better idea, you know, in November, December, on how long we need them.
All right, um, any other questions on the schedule? I think the last item we have here is, um, where we would request, um, a, a, approval of the guaranteed maximum price, um, number three. And that would be in the amount of twenty-seven million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. And this would give us the authority to move forward and issue contracts to all of our trade partners and get those folks on boarded and lock in their contracts. So we can eliminate the need or the risk of any future price increases associated with those trade partner costs. To be clear, this, this anticipates the five million dollars in cost reductions that we'd previously looked at, that associated with, um, that guaranteed maximum price.
So the contract was twenty-seven million, one hundred and forty here, at one hundred and ten. Is that one of those added items that needs to be changed, I'm assuming?
This is the correct amount. That needs, that's a draft that needs to be updated based on some adjustments that were made. Yeah, adjustments are made.
As I mentioned. And then while you're looking, thinking about that, I would want to bring up the issue of quality. So one, one thing that we've tried very hard to make sure that we were not, uh, sacrificing any quality. You know, I know when we interviewed, we said, we're not going to allow you to put, or allow poor mechanical units to get put in here that aren't going to last. You're going to have lifecycle cost issues ten years from now. So we had another option of, of taking the mechanical systems down, saving another hundred thousand dollars. But we did not accept, because we are, because we were concerned about it with that. But we were able to save a substantial amount of money, for instance, in that one, just by switching manufacturers, and it's a good manufacturer. So we see that kind of stuff happen all the time. Uh, and I, I can confidently say that I, I think that can, we said throughout, we need to change that we made that we weren't sacrificing quality for any of those changes. Just different light fixtures, but same quality, uh, quality fixture, just, uh, a different fixture. Just, I could show you an example at some point, but something similar to this instead of something. Could show you an example at some point, but something similar to this instead of something that was a little different. But for candle wise, light, lighting and all that, we did not change.
I guess looking at all these options too. I really feel like we, you know, saving the square footage we have. With these cost reduction options, we're still getting all the spaces that were presented to the community. In the bond issue, we're, we're, you know, we're not. Losing any of, any of those areas that we, we said we were, you know, we're gonna build, so I feel good about that piece of it.
We were presented three options. To review and accept. Only option is the one that's been shown that included the footprint. Of the high school as it was presented last spring. It's not showing up here, but a lot of these deducts. They have totaled them out over the side. And it's, uh, it's what you call a wish list. And that's three quarters of a million dollars. That's if and when the school, uh, we do not have any cost savings on the total project in the school. If we have the money, can add those back in.
Who gets to make those choices?
You guys.
You guys, us as a board or just admin?
It's however you guys want, you as the owner, however you guys wanna do that. I mean, we've done it several different ways. And every school district is a little different.
I can't afford, I can't approve anything over twenty thousand dollars.
I mean, sometimes they will, school boards are, will designate certain people so you don't have to have a. We don't want to necessarily always have to wait a month for the next school board meeting. You guys are great about having a lot of special meetings, but. Probably meeting doubts at a certain degree, I don't know.
We're not getting so special anymore.
Is the footprint minus seventeen ninety square feet, right?
Yeah, it's that seventeen ninety turned out to be eleven hundred square feet.
Sorry, eleven hundred, footprint minus eleven hundred square feet that was presented.
Yeah.
Okay. And just to clarify, as it sits now, I know I'm asking again, but I'm a believer in asking until I completely understand it. As it sits now, as this is presented, we don't have to come up with any extra money.
Am I sure what you're? Yes, as it's presented, you don't have to come up with any extra money. You have the choices, the choice in the future of how you want to add.
Based on what we have in our extra or.
Contingency money, there's.
We just don't wanna be stuck with a giant bill at the end and say, hey, this is what you wanted, now you gotta pay for it. Cause that's not.
Everything that, in those plans is what's in that budget and what's, that you're being asked to.
Minus the deduction items, but there's a. Half the amount that is being held aside for the total amount that is being asked currently. It's one point two million is roughly what it comes up to, right?
What's that?
The.
The wish list?
The. Five are on the owner.
This would be the low voltage security unit.
All of that.
Yeah.
But we set a half million dollars aside.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's a chance that there's five hundred thousand dollars for those pieces, which should equal that.
Then I think there's another seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for furniture that we have a budget for.
That's what we're anticipating for insurance.
Yeah.
For the contents.
And like you spoke on before, that was overdesigned and that was the cost. So with that five hundred thousand dollars, that's what we, we build to. I mean, there's nothing, we have the choice to go over that, but we don't.
You're like, we, we build to it, but we also assumed that we were gonna build to. We weren't gonna have to make six million dollars in cuts. I, I'm just finding the, the humor in it is all.
So we design our system to fit that. It's our choice if we go over that. We wouldn't have to go over that. Cause we could, this is our maximum.
That's our, our maximum limit.
Energy max, yeah.
Kind of view it as we're, we're taking the one point two million and going, that's wrong, we're throwing it out.
Sure.
And we're, we're five hundred thousand, that's it.
And you're comfortable with that? From what your past experience in wiring and all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you could, you could spend fourteen thousand dollars on one of those things or you could spend five. I know, I know, that's, that's where it's, yeah, we gotta understand more.
I didn't know.
What were you saying?
Low voltage, low, low security stuff, you know.
You good?
Put a shocker on the fence.
About as good as I'm gonna get.
Questions, anybody, or where are we at? Discussions, questions, Matt? What you got left, anything?
I, I caught something here. I just, just wanna clarify this on this exhibit one, that front page. Says this includes all costs associated with all packages for GMP three and four. I don't see four.
Yeah, we'll have that. So when we pushed from December to present another GMP. Three and four are pretty much combined to become three. So we, we will get that corrected.
Mr. President, I will move to accept the GMP number three. For that additions and renovations from the Calm Gordon. In the amount of twenty seven million, three hundred and forty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars.
There's motion to accept GMP number three. There's a second?
I'll second.
There's a second to accept GMP number three for the amount of twenty seven million, three hundred and forty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars. And the second, all those in favor?
I don't want to, but I will.
All opposed?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Don't have any choice.
Well, you're right. We won't.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
About the lettering or graphics on the inside of the building, does that all be decided later?
Which graphics are you talking about, like?
There was, there was a few thousand taken out for. There was some take. Final lettering and stuff.
Like that Buffalo Strong that got taken out, right?
We took out some of it, but they've stuck out the main entry we left in. And we had some, definitely the second level of the elementary that was taken out. Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, that's to be determined later.
Yes, okay. So we can take that out and that be a savings later, okay.
Good?
I can't remember the amount, dollar amount that's left in there, but can come back to it.
I knew that at one point.
Okay, we'll move on to twenty five. Where are we at? Twenty five, three one, one three one, twenty five dash one three two.
Yeah, it's at the best.
No, you're still gotta talk there.
Third party monitoring.
Oh, yeah, shit, sorry.
Third party monitors. Uh, McCormack. The Calm Gordon.
In your packet, there's a comparison rate that looks like this. I would put it up, I'll try to put it up on my screen, but obviously I have a few issues, so.
If you want to put it up. Leave your, leave your master budget and keep it handy too, cause you'll need that.
Okay. Oh, I know why I messed up, cause I've gone over my hours.
Can you go home?
Chandler?
Damn it, Chandler. I estimate the gears were burning this weekend. Because every time Kimberly would get on to do homework, it was blocked and she, damn it, Chandler.
So Eric's trying to pull that up. I can talk to the spreadsheet you have in front of you. So we solicited bids for construction materials and testing essentially by third party. So that, that testing is, that contract with that company is held by the district. It's another set of eyes to ensure that what we're doing on site is actually happening. They, it's, they will go in and take concrete tests, they'll take cylinders, they'll break them to make sure PSI is coming back right. They will inspect structural steel welds and bolted connections. They will review reinforcing steel in the foundation walls, grade beams, things like that. They will also test the lifts of the earthwork as we bring the building pad up out of the ground. So again, another set of eyes for the site to ensure the quality of the project. So this spreadsheet actually shows three different companies. We actually got a fourth today. That was much more than the other three here. Um, so it didn't really change the outcome, but. The proposals, you provided the proposals to them too, Eric, right? So there, the three proposals that you would have got would have been for Alice, Terricon and UES. The proposals will look different than what you see on the spreadsheet. So in order to make sure everybody's was apples to apples and in a level playing field, we had to break it out by their hourly rates. And ensure all the trips were the same so that we could make sure we had a low complete, uh, third-party inspector. So when we did that, what you will see from this sheet is that UES is a low qualified testing company. Um, at a hundred and four thousand. The other two came in, um, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand and some change above that. So. The good thing with UES is it's. If you don't, if you only use eighty thousand of that estimate that they put together, you don't pay anymore. So it, it's based on a time and materials, um, contract. This is, they put this together, this one hundred and four would hopefully be worst case. Cause there's things that if a lift fails as you're coming up. Or we find unsuitable soil that they have to take additional tests on that we can't predict, those, those things can affect that price. But, um, with how we put this together, there's, there's a little bit of a buffer in that hundred and four thousand. So hope is that we come in under that, but that's.
And we've worked with UES before.
Correct, yeah. So, uh, great, great point, Leonard. So UES is actually the company that also did the geotechnical report for us. So another good thing is they've been to the site, they know the site, they understand the soils. So that, that's a, that would be another benefit to have UES do the third-party testing and inspections.
Sorry for making you new to the day.
No, I think I figured out my problems.
Question?
On the third, on the third-party testing?
Yes.
Statements, questions? Discussion?
It is included in the master budget. It's all part of the deal.
It's all part of the deal.
It's all part of the total.
Gotta have them.
Motion?
I still move.
We have a motion to use UES as third-party monitoring testing. We have a second?
There's three options. You can't say I so.
Then we have a second.
For UES.
Thank you.
For UES.
I know what you were talking to when you were back.
We have a motion of second for UES for third-party testing. All in favor? All opposed? Vehicle purchase, one, twenty five dash one three three. We have several options?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I believe we are.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Like part of the club. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time and travel.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it all.
Thank you, guys.
You have careful.
Thank you, Eric.
We have several options of something?
Yeah, we have. Trevor and I put together several options for vehicles, just for the. As a base, um, bids and they, there's also the bid sheets in there. Um, Tubbs and Sons had expedition at fifty five, nine twenty eight forty. Explorer eight, forty thousand, eight twenty one forty. Um, Shawnee Mission Ford, fifty four thousand, six seventy six. The Explorer forty, um, thousand, two forty four. Um, I just, I put together different options just to really, really look at. And, I mean. I mean, we, we discussed in March, February, some, somewhere in there, just the. The need for additional vehicles. And that I had Emily look at the amount of mileage that we've spent so far. Um, the last two years, I will say, two thousand twenty four, we probably drove the least amount that we're going to. Just, we didn't, I know us three were busy with our situation that. Um, we didn't go to a lot of places.
Right, we minimized a lot of things.
Um, this year has been a little bit more, but, um, and it's not just us three going to, to places. It's, there's some, the, you know, going to ballgames. I will say that I think we'll always have some mileage, just if we did do an explorer, which is what kind of the idea would be. Um, there's gonna be something that, uh, for example, Mr. Sampson has to go somewhere. I have to go somewhere different and what do we do? So it's not gonna end.
Yep.
Yeah. So, um, on that, um, just, recommendation was option C. Um, it was Tubbs and Son. Let's see here, it is a little bit higher, air is higher than Shawnee Mission Ford. Some of that savings would be eaten up by having to go get it and things, things like that. Um, this closer maintenance and things too.
Serviceability.
Yeah.
Issue as well.
Yeah.
Having to take stuff back to Kansas City, then.
Um, but I think that makes sense, um, to go with them, but, um. We're, we did, we did, um, Trevor did look into the, um, four-wheel drive as, or the two-wheel drive. And it doesn't sound like they do that anymore. So, um. We, we did look into that. Yeah, there'll be four go ahead. Like I said, we need to.
Well, considering our, our weather.
We've got money.
Yeah, we have plenty of money and capital out. I did have that sheet up, um.
Here, here's a great example though too. Next week, they move the track meet. And we have a junior high track meet the same day. Junior high track meet is big enough to take a man along. There's also possibly two golf meets. So between our two vans and our suburban, and then we have kids taking ACTs that day. That might not be able to get on the bus in time, so I'm gonna possibly take them down in like the car. So we're, we're maxed out. Yeah, by, by Friday would be great. I mean, there's a definite.
And there, there will be a time, um, four to six months, I'll say now, that it's gonna take to get them. They're not on site. They wouldn't be on site at Shawnee Mission. They'd have to order them too. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a while before we have them, but.
Is it under state contract?
No, I, I think the Shawnee Mission Ford would be.
We don't have access to the state contracts?
We do, but it'd have to be through Shawnee Mission Ford.
They're the only one?
I believe so.
Is that different on Tubbs versus the government discount?
I, I know that there's something that, a form that we have to fill out with the state to use them as our vendor. Is the difference of. Just going between going with Shawnee and Ford.
I had a previous meeting where we talked about two expeditions instead of one of each, or was that ever?
I don't remember two of anything in Suburbans.
We, we discussed suburban options, like a newer used one. We looked at, the previous one also looked at Equinox, but it's, its cost is. I mean, it's lower than that score, but it's four, four, five thousand dollars. I mean, it's lower than that score, but it's four, four, five thousand dollars. Yeah. Um what I do have up here is a um, just to try to get a handle between capital outlay, like we've talked about the insurance funds are in there. The project, all of that, I put together this spreadsheet, I did this in January, so it's not completely updated, but um. I also with capital outlay, we ran scenarios where I think it's two years from now, three years, we start reducing mill rate. Um, this one is um where we are now, I'm sorry, that's small. And then this is just remaining at eight mils, and I do a projection, but like we've talked about, we have vehicle needs. And so this was actually last year, cause we had to do that to to react to what we, everything we had to spend last year. Um but I do have a um for twenty-five uh vehicle projection that we that we'd have for costs, and that's a hundred and twenty thousand. So this would be lower than that. And that I also include just some of our expected costs, like demo, you know, was over what we received from the insurance company. Um next year, we're gonna have um some expenses when we go over our time element. And these are just projected numbers, just so we can account for it. Um but next year, in preceding years or future years, um I have money for vehicles. And and there is with with the transportation plan, there was, you know, updating some buses in there, that's that's, that's when I say vehicles, I mean buses and vehicles. But um just going through, you know, we'll have some years where we stay pretty tight, you know, to what we've, what we have. But um just, just with projected, you know, moving to one building, it being a brand-new building. Um by twenty thirty, I'm, I mean, just with similar spending pattern, we would be around one point three million in there. Now if we reduce, I did the same thing.
You've got a hundred and twenty for vehicles.
Yeah, then I did, I did the same thing, if we, this is if we reduce down to six mils, and then if we reduce down to four mils, so.
We have no idea what the expenses are gonna be in the coming years. You can think that our insurance is not gonna go, it's kinda hard, but when you talk about a forty million dollar building, insurance is not gonna be cheap.
Especially when you insure it for the amount it probably should be insured for.
Yeah, cause by the time we get around to insurance, it's gonna be worth sixty million. And we gotta wait, if we made a decision to order these vehicles, we gotta but wait six to eight months?
Uh yeah, I said four to six months, but.
About normal.
In other words, you can't get that price on the lot then?
No, I haven't won a lot. With vinyl floor. Last pickup I heard one hundred was nine months.
Was there a bid done from St. Francis at all?
No.
Is there a reason why? Cause last time we got a bid from them, they were.
From where?
They were competitive, more competitive. No. Yo.
They're closed.
They are insane, I didn't know that.
She just went over there for her ass.
They were in my crown package.
I didn't know that either. Last year they were.
I know, I, man, I.
Years ago, they were.
I I had thought about that earlier today, but we hadn't asked for that, so that was an oversight on my part.
Kinda hard to ask, cause they're closed.
Yeah.
I hadn't turned that in yet. Discussions, questions, motions, what's everybody think? I think we go Tubbs, show whatever we did and tell them about that. Before I step up. Fifteen hundred dollars, give them the bag.
I got, I got a question.
Yeah, sir.
May may not affect us in here, may, you know, what keeps us from doing like the lease auction program car situation? On things like this? Is is there a reason that we don't pursue that, or is it something that we don't have enough to make it worthwhile, like I just, I just wondered?
I've never looked, I've never looked into it, to be honest with you, if there's something like that.
No, don't, they hopefully are, they they do a lease auction every year with with stuff, and uh but they have.
They have a.
Twenty-five or thirty vehicles, I didn't know if it was something that they, that the dealerships wouldn't work with on a small amount or.
That I I don't know that answer that question. I mean, we can certainly table that and I can, we can go study that a little bit to.
What's it gonna hold up to?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
I mean, we have a regular meeting in.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, so.
Yeah.
And we're not getting them by Friday, so.
So yeah, I, we can certainly look into it.
We're gonna be sitting all summer if we did.
Do a table?
I'd be okay with it, as long as it's all right with everybody else, I mean, just just to look at the option and see what the difference is.
Take it up in two weeks.
Is our, are our bids good that long?
That I don't know, we'd have to. Yeah, I know the Shawnee Mission Ford, we'd have to check off, cause it's.
We got, we also got tariffs coming up on trucks and cars.
Yo, yeah, unless I don't wanna wait too long on things, I just.
This was um almost a month ago. Three thirteen, ten days. I don't know.
Well, we could take the time, so it's still a week.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we could certainly table.
We will do this in two weeks or a week, whatever. Can you, five minutes?
Make a motion to recess for five minutes.
I'll send it.
Uh motion recess for five minutes, second, all in favor?
We're going back in.
They were almost like they were gonna be...
It wasn't prepared.
Terry had a motion.
I make a motion going to executive session for five minutes for personnel. Abbot.
Board of Abbot. Uh, motion for five minutes. Non-acted personnel, board of Abbot. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Then a second?
Second.
All in the favor? All opposed?
Oh, second, second.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignations as presented.
Yeah.
I have to say?
Yeah, I am.
Phoenix, David Benavent, seven nine, uh, English language arts teacher. Denny Pope as the staff sponsor. Kelly Do is high school assistant volleyball coach. And Jill Niermeyer as the high school school go representative.
Second. Do we have a second to accept the resignation? All in favor? All opposed?
Ten, five, okay. No, it's in between here.
Seven.
Four, one.
I don't know.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven. Do you think seventeen? Oh, I do think we go, yes, I did those ones.
I saw them.
I saw. For Eric. Second, seven minutes.
Do, uh, how's this going?
Principal evaluation.
Principal evaluation.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Okay.
End of motion for seven minutes. Executive session. Board of Eric. You have a second, all in favor? All opposed?
Back into executive session, Board and Eric for another ten minutes.
Thank you. Motion to go back into executive session for ten minute, Board and Eric. Second, all in the favor? All opposed? Again, I guess we are back again.
Yeah. And make a motion that renew contract for Miss Robic and Mr. Southson through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Motion.
The second.
The second, to renew Mr. Chalmers and Mr. Samson's contract through next year. Can't come to date for any.
Six, twenty-seven.
All in the favor? All opposed?
No, I was just doing that. When I first started, I almost did that.
Dorni?
Ten minutes. All move to go into executive session. Uh, for superintendent evaluation. For ten minutes. Board have reserved the right to call Eric in if needed.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Board, executive session.
Very nice, I thought we were here.
With the words with the reservation caller. With board with the reservation caller. We will go back into session. We have a motion.
Mr. President, I will move to extend the superintendent Eric Stoddart's contract through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
You have a motion in a second?
Second.
In a second, all in favor? All opposed? We have a motion to adjourn in ten seconds.
I'll second that one.
In a second, all in favor?